Happy New Year, everybody. Happy New Year. I would like to call to order the regular council meeting of our first council meeting of 2020, Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. If we could all stand for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
So the record reflects those who are present. I will now call the roll. Village Attorney Seraphin.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Councilman Lefredo.
Here.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Present.
Mayor Wagler.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Well, we'll start with our January House of the Month. Are we... Oh, good. Great. Awesome. Let me talk a little bit about your beautiful house. First of all, I love the contrast in the colors. That's gorgeous. Mr. Wallerwick?
Yeah.
Okay. Has lived in Miami Shores for the past three years and is an accomplished interior designer. Mm-hmm. His passion consists in restoring many of the characteristics of the 1950s architecture and design. In choosing a community to live in, he wanted a property that had a history and a story from the 50s. The property he purchased was once owned by well-known photographer Bunny Jaeger, who also did her best to keep the integrity of the designs of the 50s incorporated into the household. The color scheme and landscape design are simple, yet very inviting. Mr. Wallerwick shares the home with a trusty companion and K-9 co-designer, Barnaby the K-9. We are proud to call Mr. Wallerwick a part of the Village Beautiful community and appreciate his drive to keep the designs of the Golden Age. Thank you so much. I'll join you at the podium. I'd like to give you a certificate. Would you like to say anything before we...
I'm good. Just thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Recognizing the reward.
Thank you.
We're gonna look at the clerk over there. Come on over here, honey. Come closer. Can you come closer? You wanna hold it?
Of course.
Let's go to your left side.
Wonderful. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Congratulations so much. You gotta come to the inside.
I should. Well, I knew.
I've run to a conference call, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to public comments. For those of you wishing to make public comments, please state your name and address for the record and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Madam?
Mary Benton, 10108 Northeast First Avenue. We just put out onto social media our latest program, Saving Butterflies 101, which we intend to use to galvanize residents to turn our village into a more resilient and sustainable community. And there's been a lot of positive reaction, and we're really excited about it. And I think everybody in this community is relying on every single member of our council as well as every single member of our village staff to do the same thing, to make sure that this community is as resilient and sustainable as possible, including putting solar panels on top of village roofs, which I think Councilman Melz had suggested, and including implementing fully an integrated pest management policy, which is of great priority to a number of residents. So this is a new year and a new decade, and I think there's a lot we can do, and the more we do together, I think, the better off we'll all be. The wildfires in Australia, if you were sleeping, that woke you up. It's just devastating what's happening there, and we just have to do everything we can. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to make public comment? Last call for public comment. With no one else, public comment is now closed.
Item 6A, approval of the December 3rd, 2019 Village Council meeting minutes.
I'll move approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 7A, ordinance of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, establishing a sustainability and resiliency committee, describing its composition and stating goals, duties, and functions, and setting an effective date. This item is sponsored by Mayor Crystal Wagler.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm gonna... I know this is not a public... I have one quick comment to make, and then I'll open it up, but I thought this was well-written. Uh-huh. And I just want to make sure that the council is okay with the membership being at seven members, and that's under Section 4, Line 30. And I guess I went in reverse order. Under Section 3, Mr. Attorney, Line 10, Number 3, "Develop as part of the affordable proposals for consideration by council." Is there any way that we can take out the word "affordable" and put "reasonable"?
You can put any word you like.
Mm-hmm. "Reasonable," I'd prefer. And other than that, I have no other comments, so I'll open it up to the council. Vice Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Madam Mayor?
Yes, I'm agreeing.
I just, on... With the Line 10, I think we probably want to then on Line 7, because I think that's how it was to say, identify reasonable immediate, so that then I think that's what the Line 10 was referring to, that...
Right.
And the only other comment I had, and I agree this is very well put together, was that the... If there's any way we can tie into, we have had a professional consultants develop a... Identify, you know, the major vulnerabilities that we have, that we're facing. If there's any way we can reference that in, like in the Step 1, where it says, "Develop an annually updated proposal, sustainability action plan," or do we think that's not necessary? You know, in other words, that we've got a guidebook to the kind of most immediate pressing things, and have begun to ask for funding. Do you think we need to reference that in here? So, and I'm only bringing this up in reference to some of the experiences we had with the Education Advisory Board, and, you know, helping them make sure that they understood that we really wanted them to work on fleshing out that education compact.
I think that's a fair, reasonable comment. It makes sense.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
If it's the consensus of the council, you can add at the end of the first sentence of Section 3, which is on Line 3, after global warming slash climate change, you could put comma in light of the, and then reference the report.
What line?
Right here.
Okay, I got it.
What is the name of that report?
It is called the... I put, "The Plan shall be informed by the village's comprehensive plan..." Oh, no. Then I said, "It's the village's environmental vulnerability study of June of 18."
We'll just put the village's most recent.
Okay.
And only.
Well, now, but in the future, who knows? Environmental...
Vulnerability study.
Vulnerability study. Madam Clerk, you with me?
So noted.
Excellent.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Lefredo.
Is Councilman Brady finished?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I have one concern. I'm gonna vote for the ordinance. I think it's wonderful. I think it's a great initiative, but I do have a serious concern. That's on Line 30, Section 4, Membership. The SRC shall consist of seven members, quote-unquote, "who need not be village residents." Here is my concern, and I'm coming from, not anymore, but I was a trial lawyer for a lot of years, and I've seen a lot of experts in trial. And I don't want us to get a board that runs away from the village, and I would think that we would need, in my opinion, a majority of the members of the board to be village residents, because I would be concerned that alternate or competing agendas would take priority using the platform of the village board, people that want to make a name for themselves or people that want to. And I'm not saying this, but I have to say it, because it's my job to say it in public, people that want to steer business to their friends or their associates. I think if we have a majority of four village residents, I think we'll eliminate that problem.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. I... You may remember when we first had this discussion, I raised the issue. Generally, we limit membership to village residents on village boards. However, this board, being somewhat specialized and involving, hopefully, some degree of expertise, and I noticed in the other ordinances from other communities that I reviewed, they're even more specific, where they want someone with lead-based, you know, credentials and an architect and et cetera. It seemed to me that it will be a challenge in a village of our size to get really good expertise, and I didn't want to limit it to village residents. If someone from outside the village showed an interest and could garner the requisite votes on this council to be appointed, and remember, you're putting people on this. If someone's a quote-unquote "expert" who you don't have confidence they're gonna do the right thing, by all means, don't vote 'em on. And of course, you can vote 'em off as easily as you vote 'em on. I just see difficulty in saying a majority of which needs to be village residents. I think you either strictly limit it all to village residents, or you give yourself the option to pick whoever you want.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Lefredo.
I respectfully disagree with the opinion of the village attorney. It's... Once someone gets ensconced on a village board, it's embarrassing and difficult to remove them. I had to do it once with a friend of mine and a football buddy of mine, who's back on the Country Club Advisory Board now, and it was horribly embarrassing, and I had to do it with another with a scout parent at the same time, and this was 20 years ago, and I don't think they've either... One of them has ever forgiven me for it. So I think this is a reasonable restriction, and I also think having... Having... That was a good idea. Having come and put people on boards before... If any village in Dade County has a plethora of qualified people in various areas, it's Miami Shores. And I just... I'm just afraid... Here's my fear, but I'll vote for whatever you all want to do. I'm gonna vote for whatever you all want to do. I'm afraid that we'll get some dazzling resumes and make a blue-ribbon panel that really will not be residents with the interests of Miami Shores at heart, but I'll... I'm voting for it either way. I just made my point.
Thank you, Councilman Lefredo. Let me address your issue, because I'm not in total disagreement with what you're proposing. I would have to proffer that I do think we have a number of qualified residents here in Miami Shores, and I've met a lot of people who are within this sphere of industry. So maybe there's a way that we can make sure that village residents who apply and hopefully become a part of this board have the majority vote, and leave it open to maybe having two, whatever that number might be, non-residents, just because I do think there are some qualified folks that may apply, but I understand your concern. So those are my thoughts, and I'm not against it. Vice Mayor Birch, do you have some comments?
Oh, sure. One thing... Let's say this. Normally, I don't meddle in the formation of an ordinance. I guess I had a very meddlesome sort of feeling holiday. I had a serious flood in my office, 12 inches of water in it. Maybe that contributed to it. I don't know. But anyway, I've written up a few comments, so I made a number of copies. If I just pass them down, and I'm not married to these, I just put them forth as suggestions. And I've never meddled in a whereas before, but I'd like to add one. I'm looking at you, Richard, so...
I hear you. Someone give one of these to the clerk, please.
So one of the... The one whereas that I would like to have is something that we have done, which is we are a member of the Southeast Florida Climate Change Compact and a participant in the compact's Regional Climate Action Plan, which informs municipalities on climate change actions prior... Particular to the region. And I think that's important, because these people have worked very hard to develop... That's three counties working together to develop the Climate Change Action Plan. And I think that anyone who's on this board needs to know a little bit about it. You can easily reference their website. It is full of suggestions from municipalities, and I just think it's a good thing to mention at the outset in a whereas, so that we... They know that where we are already. And so then, the other thing that I was not particularly comfortable with was having the word "reasonable" in Item 3 is great. I'm just not so happy with that sentence. It throws everything in there: climate change, sea level rise, carbon emissions, the execution of village tasks and decisions. So what are we looking for? Reasonable proposals for consideration by council, and we all know that this is really about climate change. That's what the ordinance is about. So I put together a sentence that I liked better. So you can look at that sentence. Maybe you're interested in it, but it does dovetail with what Councilman Brady said, which is to at least name the village's environmental vulnerability study somewhere in here, which the attorney has an idea of where to put it, which I'm fine with. So I mentioned the impact of... In Item 9, I added, "Identify strategies to limit the impact of climate change informed by the Regional Climate Action Plan," so that we're not asking the committee to operate in a vacuum, you know, that we're giving them something that we've already approved to become a member of and are part of, or on the list of municipalities that approved the plan. And so those are just a couple of things. I don't have a strong opinion on village residents or not village residents, because I think the Doctors Charter School Board allows non-residents, and it works very well. But one other thing I thought of that might be an advantage to having a non-village resident is if it's one of the neighboring municipalities that we're saying in Item 10, we want to cooperate with or possibly partner with, then that non-resident could be a bridge to those communities, or that municipality, neighboring municipality, let's say. So that's one advantage I thought of. And anyway, sorry for the sort of overreach on this, but...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Attorney?
The only one of these proposed changes that caused me any concern is Paragraph 5, and it's the first word, "promote." We have set this up carefully to be an advisory committee, and this is the one verb that I think may cross the line. The way it had originally been written is they can make recommendations to the council on these sort of items. I don't have a problem with the way it's worded, but to have the committee independently doing a promotion and those sort of things, I think, begins to be problematical. So other than that, if it's the consensus of the council that you like all of these changes, we can certainly incorporate them between first and second reading.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Birch?
Okay. So just one thing about the word "promote." When I think of our village boards and committees, I think of them promoting their causes all the time. Fine Arts promotes fine arts. The Charter School Board supports and promotes the charter school. The... I think a really good example is the Library Board promotes support of the library. And it does say right in there, "Promote all aspects of sustainability by recommendations to the village council." I mean, it really has that right in there.
I understand. The difference between this board and the boards you named, those are not purely advisory boards. Those, you know, there's some advantage to keeping it a purely advisory board, but you're not required to if you don't want to make it a purely advisory board. But that was our original concept of it.
I yield to your concern.
Okay. Is there... Do I sense a consensus that everyone's okay with the Vice Mayor's proposed amendments? If so, we'll include them.
They might not have had a chance to read them.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. I read pretty fast.
Madam Mayor, I'm comfortable with these changes, and but would want to make sure Point 5 is worded in such a way to... I know the idea is that we want them to make recommendations to village council that promotes aspects of sustainability. I know what you're saying there.
Just scratch through real quick. It's just that one word. Madam Mayor, I would join the opinion of Councilman Brady on this.
I'm discerning the difference between 3, under Section 3, that you have here, and what is already here. So bear with me one second. Okay. That's your vulnerability. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
In Section 3, under the section... Under Vice Mayor Birch's Section 3, Sub 3, she references the village's environmental vulnerability study.
Right.
Is that to say, if she referenced... If it's referenced there, would it then also need to be referenced in the whereas clause as she's proffering?
It was up here that the attorney was saying Section 3 duties and functions.
Right.
To put it after that.
Okay. But you have it here, so I'm just trying to...
I don't see anything wrong with having it in the whereas clause and also having it in the description of the duties.
Okay. Because I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure. Councilman Melz, do you have any comments?
I do. Thank you. I'm for inclusion of Vice Mayor Birch's recommendations, as is... That's fine by me. So I agree in the conversation by consensus. I would like to go back to Councilman Lefredo's comments regarding Section 4, if I may. That's a membership consistency. I understand, Councilman Lefredo, you're in 10, but I am in disagreement with that application, because what you would be asking us to do then is to take possibly less qualified people because they're residents, and I think that's not particularly right or fair. I think what you're... What you would expect from us, and I'm not speaking for everybody, but that we are going to want to put residents in the position as long as they're qualified, right? I'm not putting my neighbor there because he's a resident or she's a resident over somebody who has extreme qualifications to advise us. I don't think that's right. And to lock us in that we have to have four people who are residents doesn't do any justice to what we want this committee to do or this board to do. I think it's inherent in the five of us to try and prefer to put residents in there, but why make it some stone-cold number that it has to be? If all of them are residents, fantastic, but I think we want the best people to be able to give us the best advice of how to act. So I just don't see the validity or of picking an arbitrary number that that's going to make it the best possible composition. That's not how life works, right? It's really... We want the best folks to be on the board, and I think I'm... I will vote to appoint a resident over somebody else as long as a resident's qualified and can do what we want them to do and to the benefit of their other residents. That's how I feel.
Should I respond to that? Yeah. I appreciate your opinion, and I was trying to look out into the future and forestall a situation where we had interests that exceeded or were different from those of the village based upon the platform we have given to quote-unquote "outside experts." But I said, and I committed, I'm gonna vote for this whether the council accepts us or not, but this is a warning. I've seen it before come up, and I can assure you that I really felt like maybe just one or two outside experts would be sufficient, because this is a new area. There's a lot of groping for remedies, as can seem... Can be conceded by the crisis in Australia, who has a lot of experts. It hasn't gone well, and that was what my intention was, and I think that... But I'm gonna vote for it either way. If the council wants to leave it as it is, that's fine, but I'm concerned that it's not in the best interest of our residents to make this board a majority of non-residents. That's what was my main concern.
Okay, but I have to jump in here. We're not suggesting that would be a majority of all non-residents. That was not... I don't think that was the point that anybody was making here. But so, Mr. Attorney, how do we... On this issue, on Section 4, Sub A, how is it that we come about a consensus on how we want this language to read? It's the best... Or which would you recommend?
You tell me how you want it to read, and that's how it will make it read.
So can I show...
I mean, I guess you could invite an expression, other than Councilman Lefredo, is anyone uncomfortable with the language as it currently stands?
Anyone with the exception of Councilman Lefredo. Are you uncomfortable with the language as it stands?
No.
No. All right. So I think we leave it that way, and you can still make a motion to amend it between first and second reading if you feel strongly about it. But we will get you a revised version for second reading with the changes that have been discussed here today. But you should vote tonight to approve it on first reading.
Okay. But I just want to make one comment. I wanted to say, Vice Mayor Birch, thank you for your research and your input, because you have some institutional knowledge of what we've done in the past, and I appreciate you taking the time to comb through it and make sure that we are inclusive of things that we have done prior to. I appreciate that. Thank you. It's a big help. Does anybody else have any other comment? All right. Do I have a motion to move this resolution as amended?
I'd like to...
Oh.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, no. I was saying, I will move that we approve this resolution as amended.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Item 9A, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, creating budget amendment number four to the fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budgets, transferring $99,818 from the non-deprimental contingency account in the general fund to various detrimental payroll accounts. Staff on this item is the finance director through the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. The council has already approved the cost-of-living adjustment for the police department through the approval and adoption of the collective bargaining agreement. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking the money out of the contingency fund where we budgeted it, putting it into the payroll accounts, so that we can... It'll be in the proper place.
Thank you.
Sort of a... It's just a housekeeping item.
Any comments? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, it's my understanding we're moving on to 10A.
10A, a word of the 2019-11-01 invitation to bid for the competition pools resurfacing at the aquatic facility to national pool design and authorizing the village manager to execute all related documents, decided and sponsored by the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. The Recreation Department has gone out to bid twice now. This is the second time to have the surface of the larger competition pool resurfaced. The first time, we didn't receive any bids at all, so we had to redo and send the bids back out. This time, we received a bid... Three bids. The lowest bidder that best met our needs was National Pool Design for $89,256. They have done excellent work for us in the past, and so I'm recommending that we accept that bid. We have, in our capital budget, $65,000 allocated currently. The shortfall is coming up on 9B to transfer the money through another resolution from contingency back into capital to pay for this. And the surface there has met its life expectancy, no matter how much Eric and his crew scrub and try and make it look good. It just... It's done. It needs to be resurfaced.
Okay. I just have one question. I have two questions.
Sorry. I'm a little under the weather, which is why Eric's here with me, too. It's okay.
Once this is completed and the bid is awarded, when can you anticipate the process starting? Because I just want to make sure we're on track for the summer months. Because I, I just want to make sure we're on track for the several months.
We actually have them on standby for next week.
Starting on the 13th.
And how long, approximately, how long is the process?
Approximately, three weeks.
Three?
Three weeks.
Three to four weeks.
That's including draining and refilling and rebalancing the pool, which takes some time.
Okay. And in the meantime, we do have people, is our whole pool heated?
It is.
Not currently, it's down.
Right. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, what the timeframe was on this.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
So by the end of the three weeks, we should have the heaters back up and the pool resurfaced and.
Right.
Good to go.
We're good to go.
Okay, all right. Vice Mayor Birch?
Sure, I have a comment. I went over to the pool, I don't think you were there, and one of the staff toured me around, and described how they had been put to task to go underwater, scrub some of the areas, and try to, to patch and redo them. But I had seen enough pools in my lifetime to know that this one was ready for resurfacing. I was a little disappointed when I first read the item, because it's 28% higher than the original budget plan. And I thought, wow, do we have to do this right now? And then I got there and I realized, yes, we do. I also wanted to point out that you also have the pool during the month of January, I was very interested in this, that it's a good revenue stream, that these colleges come through and they use our pool in, in that month of January. And I didn't know that before. And they, it was full. It was, it was full of swimmers.
We had Penn State last week, and we had.
Penn State, yeah. There's a lot of small Division 1A, 1AA schools and stuff, but they're coming.
Wesley Temple is here.
They've been coming for years. We typically do it right after the new year. We just found out, though, that there, I haven't told you either, that they have the website, a new website that's out, so they can do it year-round. And there's a lot of schools, less, that are interested in doing it year-round and using it. So we were proposing to maybe.
So we rented out, basically, thirteen, through, through the local colleges that help us out.
So it's great.
Additional source.
I just thought people would be interested in that, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor? I have no problem with the proposal and the request. I do have a question, and maybe you can help me understand. Rossmell Pools, why was their bid submission $240,000 more? Were they gonna paint it with gold?
They do high-end hotels on the beach. And, and actually, our contractor that is doing the other pool came in even higher than that without a written proposal, just like a, you know, flyby. He's like, oh, I charge you, what was it, $275?
Yeah, he was, well, he was, he was actually slightly under them, because they were, weren't they, the one at 300 and something?
328.
Yeah, we were flabbergasted by that. I have no.
So there's no explanation, it's just?
I have, I think they did the, didn't they do the pools over at, in Aventura, the new, crazy, expensive water park over there? So I think, like she says, they're, they do really high-end, really obscenely high-end apparently.
But National Pools recently did ship right cove, and they did an impeccable job. Like, right at the beginning, we usually see some bubbling and cracking, we did not with them, so we were really excited when they came and, and prepared another bid.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, any other comment? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item 10A?
I'll move approval.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Item nine B, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, creating budget amendment number five to the fiscal year 2019-2020, operating budgets, transferring $25,000 from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the pool resurfacing. This item is sponsored by the finance director through the village manager.
As I previously stated, we're just, we're just moving the money over from, from the bank into the capital budget so we can pay for this expenditure.
Now that you approved it, you gotta pay for it.
Yes.
Understood. Do I have a motion so we can pay for it?
Move that we approve the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I have an off-agenda item, if it pleases the council.
Sure.
You all saw the settlement proposal on the ICUC matter, the former motel. And there is in the audience today representative of the law firm that made that proposal. I don't suggest that we receive any further communication from him, but he is here, I just wanted you to be aware, he's in the room. And if there's any interest in that, the sale is currently scheduled for the 27th of this month, I believe. And it's a pretty simple, straightforward settlement proposal. There are a lot of comments that were made in the letter. I passed it on without comment, but I disagree with almost everything that's said in that letter, but I think you can read the important parts of the letter, which is they propose to pay us X dollars with interest, not including the attorney's fees, which have not been adjudicated yet. There's at least another $95,000 over and above what's being offered that we would be able to obtain at a foreclosure sale if we bid the full amount of our judgment and someone outbids us. So this really amounts to a simple, we'll pay you roughly $95,000 less than the full value of your judgment. Though the appeal will be dismissed, the case will be dismissed, the current owner of the property would remain the current owner of the property, the liens would be deemed resolved. And I pass it along without recommendation one way or another, it's a pure business decision, there's no real legal analysis that's necessary. It's just, if you're interested in doing it, I appreciate that guidance tonight, and if not, we'll just plow ahead and let it be sold.
Thank you. Melz? Thank you. It's helpful. Madam Clerk, announcements.
I hear that.
Miami Shores Fine Arts Commission will be presenting the Moonlight Family Concert on Friday, January 17th. There'll be food vendors from 6:00 to 9:15 p.m., and a concert from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. featuring Eden Archer. This event will take place at the Recreation Playing Fields at 9825 Park Drive. Remember to bring your blankets, chairs, and the kids. Come join the fun at the Plaza 98 Game Night on Saturday, January 18th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Northeast 2nd Avenue and 98th Street. There will be food, games, and lots of fun. Village offices will be closed on Monday, January 20, 2020, in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Normal sanitation schedules will be followed. The next village council meeting will be, will begin at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at Village Hall Council Chambers. And the Miami Shores Farmers Market is every Sunday at Optimist Park from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Come enjoy fresh produce from local farms and prepared foods for every taste. There's also for Sunday of the month Community Bazaar, where residents are welcome to register and set up a table at the farmer's market and sell their antiques. The village's annual Unity Day celebration is scheduled for Saturday, February 8th, beginning at 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And please remember to call Recreation Department for booth information at 305-758-8103. And would you rather receive the newsletter via email? Residents can sign up to receive these newsletters by email, simply use the contact us link on the front page of our website. Be sure to email, be sure your email includes your name and mailing address, the communication specialists will take care of the rest. And please remember to visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to sign up to receive agenda notifications. Village Council comments.
Mr. Lefredo, do you have any comments this evening?
I would just say that I hope everyone had a good holiday season and a Happy New Year, and I'm glad to be back visiting with my colleagues and staff, the best-run village in the state of Florida.
Councilman Brady?
I just wanted to wish my son Seamus turned nine today, and I told him I would tell him happy birthday from the dais. So, happy birthday, Seamus. Thank you. Thank you, council. Oh, he would love that.
Seamus Brady.
Vice Mayor Birch? Oh, yes. I'm very happy to report that I was at the farmer's market on Sunday, and it seemed to be doing well, but we can always use more people, so please put it on your calendar to come to the farmer's market. I have a curiosity question. Did you move Unity Day for a reason? Because you needed to be cooler when you were doing burgers or something? It was just.
Of course. It's usually March.
It's the first, it's always been the first weekend in March, so I was wondering.
We moved it up a little bit, because we've been noticing that the attendance has been trailing off the last several years. And so we used to have it earlier, and the attendance appeared to be stronger. And, and over the years, we've, we've tried the lunch crowd, we've tried the dinner crowd. So it seems that February and the lunch crowd seems to be a stronger participation from the community. So we're, we're gonna do that this, this year, see how it works out, because last year, it was not good.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's it. Your Councilman Melz?
I do not have any comments.
Okay, all right. I, I just want to make one comment, and in observance, over the holidays, I noticed that we had a police presence out in the community, for those two, a strong one, monitoring our traffic and pulling folks over for speeding. And I wanted to acknowledge that and say how much I appreciate it, and I, I noticed there was an uptick in what they were out there doing, and I wanted to acknowledge their efforts, because I know that's an important issue to our residents and our community. So I just want to say thank you and acknowledge it. And with that, I have no further comments. Anyone else? And there being no further business on the board, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.